I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Have a roll call please.
Mayor Hassler.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Jones.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderman Wolfen. Mayor, we have a call.
Very good. You need approval of the agenda?
With approval.
Second.
With a couple changes. Bill 4337 would be a second reading, correct?
Second reading tonight.
And 4340 would be the calendar year 2020.
Thank you, Susie.
Take one and pass it down.
So we had it first, is there a second for approval?
Gary.
Second.
Gary, second, okay.
As amended.
As amended.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Takes us down to, it's gonna be, Dawn can't make it tonight, so she's gonna reschedule that personal appearance. So that takes us down to the city administrator's report.
Okay, well, since I was out of town, you didn't get one in your packet. And since I was gone for a week, you know, I had a whole lot to report since I wasn't here. But you asked about a couple of things, and I'm prepared to report on those. I met with a company that provides IT services to DeSoto and Crystal City and Perryville, who have a cyber security service, come in and evaluate it. They came in, they looked around, they talked to Eric, and me, and Sue, and Pam, and said they'd give me a proposal. They say that their evaluation and the report would cost $10,000, which I said is a lot of money. However, yesterday, we met with Lee Lottis and a guy named Brad Coker, who works with Tegneton on cyber insurance issues. And there's a company that provides cyber insurance and provides the management and security consulting as part of your policy. And so, they're gonna give me a price, but it sounds like it's gonna be equal to or cheaper than our current coverage, which is bundled with our overall insurance with Missouri Public Risk. And the question that we couldn't answer today was number one, since it's in our premium, we don't know what the value of just the cyber security coverage is, and what kind of credit we would get if we eliminated that with them and went with a better company. And they say, I believe it, that that industry is just evolving daily. And so, we're gonna, if they won't let us cancel a portion of our overall policy, because it's what we'd be asking them to do, then we could certainly do it when we renew, and it'll be a competitive rate with what we're paying now. So the only thing I told them is, you know, if I'm at risk with anything, I need to know that now. My concern was, and I think I expressed this to you when the consultant came down, was a lot of these policies have what they call warranties. And it says, you know, you have to do this, and you have to do that, and if you don't do these things, when it comes time to make a claim, they will deny your claim. An example would be upgrades to Windows 10, because Microsoft's no longer supporting Windows 7, and there won't be any security upgrades. So the longer you operate that system, the more exposed you become. They said there's employee training sometimes or provision. So if you haven't actually sat down and had and recorded training efforts with your employees over the cyber security issues, then they would fault you for that and maybe not pay your policy. So we're gonna make sure that doesn't happen, reviewing the policy to find out if any of those things are in there. If they'll let us switch, we can switch. If they won't let us take that out of our current policy, we'll make sure the bases are covered on anything that might disqualify us in the meantime. The unit asked about the audit, I didn't put it on my report. We called, said, where's the audit? She said, we're working on it. I'll call again and say that we expect to have it at the next meeting, because they're already past the date they contracted to deliver it. I distributed the ads that have been posted. The tourism ad is posted with the State Division of Tourism, with the Missouri Association of Convention and Tourism Bureau, with LinkedIn and Indeed.com. The city administrator ad is posted with Missouri Municipal League, with the Missouri City Managers Association, and in LinkedIn and Indeed.com. LinkedIn and Indeed.com are the only two that cost us something, they have to give them a budget. You give them a budget, and I want to spend more than $20 a day to pay by the number of respondents, but it's capped. And so, you know, about $250 a month for either of those services. Finally, we met with Audubon today, because they were catching up on the TIF. They're one of our two TIF projects. We haven't made a distribution to them, because they hadn't requested one. But they are entitled to one, and we sat down and went over that today. The first time since we started this, 2012, 2013, the real estate base has been met. And that's a consequence of two things. One is the reassessment, it's raised the values of many of the properties, and your decision to remove the properties that are no longer owned by private. And I think that's the big difference, was getting the now nonprofit Texas Simp properties out of the TIF, got it down to where the base was lowered, and the assessed evaluations now exceeded it, and money was put into the special allocation fund for real estate. And we're supposed to, I think we have to wait a little bit, because not everybody pays their taxes in the month of December. So you need to wait for some period of time to make sure you have an accurate figure for the full year, but we know it's gonna be above the base, and that's a good thing. Yes, sir.
I have a question. On your position description, you don't have anything in there about the resident requirement.
It'll be, there's lots of things that aren't in there.
Well, I realize that, but...
I can amend it.
I mean, until we change it, or if we do, don't change it, I just think if I was...
It's still a requirement, I mean, it's a requirement. And if somebody responds and says they are interested in applying, that we told, that's something they have to comply with.
I'd sure like for this board to consider changing that.
I would be open to voting in favor of that for the right candidate. I wouldn't recommend doing it before, and then obviously, I'd like to get legal opinion again, just to make sure, but...
Certainly can. That's a decision you all need to make. You just have to work out the timing of it.
Well, in the past, you advised against making exceptions to an ordinance for a case back case basis.
Well, it wouldn't be an exception. I assume that you'd be repealing the requirement.
Altogether.
Altogether. You know, my assumption is that you wouldn't say except Joe, you know, Joe Canafer. But you certainly can do it if you want to.
So couldn't we just put it in there that a residency requirement may be required?
Well, that's what I'm saying, I mean...
Tell them something.
Practically speaking, I mean, you can do whatever you want to add, but practically speaking, any city administrator worth his salt is gonna look at the ordinance. First thing they're gonna see that, they're gonna go on the website, and they're gonna check the ordinance, or the qualifications, or the requirements. So I mean, I don't wanna keep you from changing your ad if you want to, but I don't see it as, I don't think anybody's gonna be surprised. And if they are, it's like, why were you surprised when you looked at the ordinance? Because that's what they're gonna do.
Well, you all know all my view on it. I think you limit yourself. I think, I wouldn't be opposed to making that, at least, if you wanna have a residency rule, make them a residence of the county. You know, my gosh, man, that's, that gives them a little bit more leeway. You know, I get the, I understand the concept of, we're paying this person by the city, should live in the city, I get that, but I just think you limit yourself, and with technology today, I think it's archaic, it's just old, you know, and that's the big thing. You know, they're doing it in St. Louis with the policemen. They're limited, and they're suffering for it. Now, it's not apples and apples there, but it's similar, you know, so...
We've got a good town, somebody should wanna come here.
Martin, back on that insurance for the cyber security and stuff, most commercial insurance policies only cover you if you have an attack, they don't really protect you before. That's something I'd wanna be clarified on, you know, when going to another company and stuff, to make sure if they're gonna protect us, you know, with whatever firewalls and stuff that we have to have, that's a big deal. But like I said, my experience in the past of doing commercial insurance is they only cover you in the event you've had one.
Well, I mean, their coverage is a damage claim.
Right.
And the question is, our current company doesn't offer any in-house services, they're not gonna come in and help evaluate our hardware and what software we're using, and make sure that we're properly protected. There are consultants that do that, it's a little expensive. This insurance company that they're proposing we go with has that service as part of their program, so they don't wait for you to be attacked.
Right.
They're gonna wait for you to be attacked to pay, but they're gonna help you protect yourself against it by coming in and evaluating your system. Obviously, it's in their interest, because it reduces the possibility to get there and
And speaking to those two job applications, as far as the tourism position, we do have some applicants. I talked to Susie to be kind of on a committee to then interview people. I would like Sarah Menard, who is in tourism. Then we're gonna talk to, I think we're gonna talk to one other person, and then Martin can be involved in that. And as far as the city administrator, I'd like to see myself, I'd like to see Joe talking to people. I'd like to talk to Pam, I think she needs to be involved with that, and then Martin on these positions.
Paul, back to the tourism thing and stuff, you know, we kinda talked about reaching out to the county.
Yes, I'll be over there Monday morning to talk to the county folks.
I think we should reach out to them to maybe be on that committee too, if it sounds like that might push them in our direction.
I'd surely ask.
Right.
You know, all I can do is ask, and I will ask, so... Okay, next. Thank you, Mark. Takes us to staff reports, Eric.
Evening, chief.
Any questions?
Standard. I don't have anything substantial to report.
You've done pretty big the other guys.
Sometimes. It's been reasonable. Like I said, all the guys are doing well. Again, I don't know that we have anything substantial to report, so if there's some questions, I'll turn it over to the next guy. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve, good point.
Last year, our ultraviolet system was flooded in a flash flood, caused damage to it. Since then, it was put out for bid, approved for purchase, and I'm happy to say that the unit's been installed and has been running for the past couple of weeks. We did run some tests on it. The disinfection pretty much kills all the E. coli and the water discharge to the stream, and our results are coming back as zero E. coli. So it's performing well beyond what we expected. Lots of our time, we've been working with different contractors that are gonna be providing materials and water service and fire protection for the new McDonald's that's coming. We've got them all, all their material list, all their prices, costs that'll be due when the construction begins. During the cold weather, we received numerous calls from plumbers fixing small leaks in plumbing, where lines had froze, cracked, just all sorts, just little stuff, but it keeps us busy running back and forth.
They call you to turn off the water?
Yes. Yeah, they call us, they come by, they, most of the time, we'll send them to the city hall for a work order. That way, we got it on record that we were there.
So you were made aware there was a woman who was gonna come in and talk about wet basements?
Yeah.
Not here tonight, but did you have a chance to kind of evaluate the area where this occurred?
This is the same area that we had a problem with last year, and same customers. We smoke tested the area, we inspected the lines with cameras, we had no signs of any ionized air or extra water going into our system in that area. What we did have was, from our smoke testing results, were two broken sewer laterals at both the residences that were noted as the resident was supposed to be here to speak. No repairs have been done to either of the residences' personal lines.
How do we, how do we fare with the, we had that rain, we had three, I think almost a four-inch rain. I know there was a, I got a call from a lady on Audubon, I think you went over there?
Yep.
Who had a basement flooded. And then, but out there on Point Bay, anywhere else, we...
The Point Base area, well, actually, we'll start with the one on Audubon. There was two on Audubon that had water in the basement. Both of those, both of those had collapsed sewer laterals, and it was letting excess rainwater into their basement. It was not our water, it was due to the broken pipes. The Point Base area, which used to be overcome with rainwater, we went out and inspected manholes. We went out starting about 1:30 in the morning, and continued till about noon the next day, inspecting the manholes throughout the day and night. And nothing got above the, nothing, the pipes weren't even full. It was well below flow line.
And recall that we discovered a major pipe separation in a detention pond at the top of the hill from Point Base, what, two years ago now?
Yeah, about a year and a half ago.
Year and a half ago.
We found in the bottom of the detention basin where the sewer main crosses, that there were, well, the neighborhood below was taking the excess water, of course, causing residents problems, but the collapsed pipe in the detention basin, there was a rut cut in the ground that did not go to the outfall of the detention basin. It stopped just shy of it, so...
So that might have been, and we think that was, the major source of the problems that were experienced at Point Base.
And my last question, the problem we have with the nursing home up there, how is that? I remember we had some discussion, whether, because they're causing some problems in our sewers?
As far as the rags and the wipes and the rubber gloves, that has pretty much stopped. Occasionally, we still get one, but that could be a resident, that could be a new employee, but those are not an issue. We do have some other issues that we're looking into at this time. We've been, did some sampling of the line that they discharged to, and there's excessive grease amounts in the sewer, and it's basically filling up our lift station with grease. The other day, we had to get down in there and clean it out by hand, and we took five Skidsteer buckets out. So, one little bucket at a time. So we're working on addressing that.
Okay. Tom?
Steve, that carried a flash flood and mess of our ultraviolet, what have you done to kind of prevent that happening again?
The new, well, we're not gonna prevent it from happening again. The ultraviolet system sits 20 feet in the ground below creek level. The creek comes up, I mean, it gets overcome with water. There's no solution, except for, the new one, when I designed it, I spec'd a completely submersible unit, and the controls to me moved out of the floodplain, and the electrical controls can no longer be exposed to floodwaters, and the stuff that is in the pit is completely submersible.
Joe?
Since we were talking about stormwater and stuff, which has nothing to do with speed, but did we have any problems in the basement with the big blast?
Minimal. I was down there that, early that morning, and it was very minimal. It wasn't, Dawn didn't have any problem on this end, it was back there by the pits. And I did witness a spot on the wall where it was coming through, and then some weeping just prior to, just on the floor by the pits, you know, on the, you know, that was it. It was really minimal. So I don't know, whatever we did down there with the, I think we opened up some, made a big difference, so...
Hank Johnson came in and gave me a name of somebody that he has used. Called him, and he's gonna be here during the lunch hour tomorrow. So he's coming with Hank's recommendation, if anybody wanna show up for him, we'll leave him there and see what he has to say.
But it was dry, the walls were dry all the way down to the pits. I mean, the upper end was dry. So the last time, that was, it was awfully heavy.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you. Any committee reports?
With regard to the building, and I will try to be here tomorrow at noon, but I talked to SCI, and SCI can, they've got the expertise in-house without outsourcing to anyone, but they can put a spec together based on their findings, the letter that we got from SCI as far as the, their recommendation on how to mitigate the water coming in. So if we, if we wanna entertain that, we've got a, an estimate maybe under $1,000. We would have to write a PO to get them to start work on that. They could write a spec. So at that point, we would have a recommendation from Woods, a recommendation from Helotech, recommendation from SCI, that would be a spec that we could put to a contractor and have them implement. So those are our options with regard to making that basement watertight. So that's just, that's the only update I have right now. If we wanna go forward and have SCI write that spec, you know, then we could, we could talk about issuing a PO to them.
They don't have a purchase order system, but we'll send them an engagement letter?
Well, yeah, I'm sure any act of good faith to get them rolling would be fine, but... So that's that update.
Do we wanna go forward with that?
Sounds like a good next step to me.
Go to that next step.
Okay.
Okay?
Still dealing with Carl.
Carl?
Yep.
All right, any other reports? Any public comments? All right, so at 6:24, we're gonna go, we're gonna have a public hearing. The mayor and the board of Alderman will hold a public hearing to consider rezoning of 1,000 Progress Parkway, I-1 Light Industrial District to C-1 General Commercial District. David, you wanna come up to speak about? Charlie?
I can, I think you all know this is the piece of property that Mr. Hyde was talking about purchasing. I-1 doesn't allow for residential use, C-1 does. The neighboring property is already C-1. They haven't zoned in past this 7:00, I believe. Any questions?
No questions? So we'll close the public hearing then at 6:25.
Very good.
Takes us to the consent agenda. Second. All in favor? Thank you. Takes us to old business, Bill number 4337, an ordinance, repeat, this is the second reading of Bill number 4337, an ordinance repealing and replacing Article 12 offenses concerning tobacco with Article 12 offenses concerning tobacco, alternate nicotine products, or vapor products.
I make a motion to approve.
Second. I have a roll call, please.
Alderman Smith.
Yes, please.
Alderwoman Johnson. Yes. Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Jones.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill number 4337 now becomes ordinance 4265.
Thank you. Takes us to new business. Bill number 4338, an ordinance approving a zone change from I-1 Light Industrial Zoning District to C-1 General Commercial Zoning District for Lot, for Lot A of Lot 2 of the replat, of Highway 32 Industrial Park, 1,000 Progress Parkway.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Motion for a second reading.
Second.
All right, all in favor of that? Aye. So Bill number, second reading of Bill number 4338, an ordinance approving a zone change from an I-1 Light Industrial Zoning District to a C-1 General Commercial Zoning District for Lots A of Lot 2 of the replat, of Highway 32 Industrial Park, 1,000 Progress Parkway.
Move approval.
Second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Jones.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson. Yes. Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill number 4338 now becomes ordinance 4266.
Thank you. Takes us to Bill number 4339, an ordinance approving a budget amendment to the City of St. Genevieve Fiscal Year 2019 Budget relating to the Capital Improvement Fund, number 70.
And that should be fiscal year 2020 budget.
Motion to approve with the change.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Motion for a second reading?
Have a second?
Second.
Have a second? All in favor? Aye. It takes us to Bill number 4339, an ordinance approving a budget amendment to the City of St. Genevieve Fiscal Year 2020 Budget relating to the Capital Improvements Fund, number 70.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Jones.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan. Alderwoman Johnson. Yes. Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill number 4339 now becomes ordinance 4267.
Thank you. Takes us to Bill number 4340, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement between the City of St. Genevieve and St. Genevieve County regarding 911 dispatching services for the calendar year 2020.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. And it takes us down to Bill number 4341, an ordinance allowing the 2020 Show Me Green Sales Tax Holiday to apply to the local sales tax of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, between April 19th and April 25th of 2020.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. Is there any other business? There's no other business, a move to adjourn this meeting. No need to motion. Nope, it's adjourned, it's a meeting adjourned. Nope, it's adjourned, it's a meeting adjourned.